Welcome everybody to the meeting. This is the Development Plan Panel Meeting. My name is councillor Caroline Gruen and I'll be chairing today's meeting. The meeting is being live streamed on the City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. Could I now invite members to introduce themselves around the table? I've just introduced myself, so we'll go with Martin.
Thank you Chair, my name is Martin Elliott and I'm the Head of Strategic Planning.
Thank you, I'm Catherine Holloway, Team Leader for Sites and Policies.
Caroline Harris, Principal Planner in Plans and Policies Team.
Good afternoon councillor Peter Carlisle-Carleam-Farley Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Kayleigh Brooks-London and Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Jim McKenna, De Arme Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Annie Maloney and I am substituting for councillor Taylor today.
Good afternoon councillor Helen Hayden, Temple Newsom Ward and Executive Member for Infrastructure and Climate.
Good afternoon everyone, Javid Akhtal at London and Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon Philip Plumtree-Vale, Principal Legal Officer and Legal Advisor to the panel this afternoon.
Good afternoon Toby Russell-Clark to the panel.
Good afternoon everyone councillor Colin Campbell.
Good afternoon councillor Barry Anderson, Adelant Wharfdale Ward.
Good afternoon Adam Harback, Group Manager for Policy and Plans.
Thank you everyone. And now Toby, could you take us through to item five please?
Thank you Chair. Under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under Item Number Two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press or the public. Under Item Number Three, there are no formal late items noted. Under Agenda Item Number Four, can I ask members to declare any interests? Thank you. And under Agenda Item Number Five, apologies have been received from councillor Lamb, councillor Finnegan and councillor Taylor with councillor Maloney substituting for councillor Taylor. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much and that takes us to the minutes. Our Agenda Item Six. So I'm going to take them page by page as I normally do and I will take Accuracy and Matters arising together. So it's page, they start on page five of your pack. So page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine and the final page, page 10. So I haven't seen any indications on the minutes, but I do know that Martin has a couple of updates on us under the matters arising.
Thank you Chair. So two updates in relation to plan making consultations that have recently closed. So the first is around the SAP remittal and the second is around the local plan update one, your neighbourhood, your city, your planet. So I'll deal with the SAP remittal and it's just to say that on the, on the request of the planning inspector examining the site allocations plan remittal, one site, a site at Barrowby Lane in the east of Leeds. She changed her mind on that from, from the initial hearings to subsequent hearings that were held. And the inspector's mind was changed from an initial recommendation to release that site from the Green Belt for employment use to actually keeping that site within the Green Belt. So that warranted further consultation. That consultation has now been held. It closed at the end of last week and the council on behalf of the inspector has received 110 responses to that. Those responses will now go to the inspector and she will take a view on matters before submitting her draft report to the council. So that's an update on the site allocations plan remittal. And after receipt of that report, the council can proceed to, to adopt that part of the site allocations plan. But when there's any questions from members on that? Thank you.
No, don't see any questions.
Yes, just, just a short, I've prepared a short presentation just for the local plan update one, matter arising, just to give some initial findings from the consultation exercises as Martin described. Just to explain, obviously we received a lot of detailed representations as part of this consultation. We're not in a, in a position to provide sort of the full commentary on the consultation at this stage. But we thought it would be helpful just to give some initial sort of findings before we can give full findings and just be helpful for members to be able to see what some of the emerging themes from the consultation were. And a fuller report will obviously be submitted to Development Plans Panel consideration at a later date. Just to move forward. It's just not letting me do it. There we go, sorry. So we receive 550 representations, the vast majority of which were online smart survey responses and then 90 emails and then some young person surveys that we had completed and against the SCI targets that members of Development Plans Panel endorsed and approved. The first target is about have we received a response from every single ward in the city of Leeds and we have. We've also, as I said, received four to five young person surveys. So that's quite a bit. We're hopeful that shows a good, good level of response in terms of young people. Also, the, the final target was around, are we getting positive feedback in terms of the consultation itself? And of those who completed the smart survey, 86% said they found the survey engaging, which we take positively and, and help sets benchmarks for future consultations. Overall, there's really strong support for all of the policies in the plan. Certainly in the smart survey data, every single policy got over 80% sort of support or approval. And it's, I think it's important to, to emphasise that just because this process can tend to emphasise the objections. Because that's the nature of the regulatory process, but I do want to make sure it's very clear that there was a lot of support for the policies, but it's also worth raising some of the objections at this stage, just so members are aware of them as we move forward. There were a small number of objections raised about the separation of local plan update one and Leeds Local Plan 2040. In terms of carbon reduction, I don't think members will be surprised that particularly from the development industry, we've received objections related to viability and also feasibility, by which they mean the ability of the industry to respond to these challenges. They are seeking further flexibility and more of a transitional arrangements to some of these net zero policies that we have in the plan. And we also had requests for further consideration of bird migratory routes through our renewable energy survey mapping work. We've got some responses from the Environment Agency requesting further amendments to the strategic flood risk assessment. In terms of green and blue infrastructure, again, we've had comments on viability and feasibility and flexibility rather, particularly with regard to tree planting. We're getting strong support for things like food growing, but again, further clarity has been sought on, on how we expect that to be delivered. And also the question of whether green space quality can be delivered on smaller sites. With 20 minute neighbourhoods, which are obviously a concept we've spoken at length here. Again, we've got some suggested amendments to the methodology, which I think is helpful. We've had conflicting responses on things like drive-throughs with some saying that we haven't gone far enough, others saying that we've gone too far in terms of contradicting the MPPF, so we'll obviously have to grapple with that. And some requests for changes of terminology with regard to design policies. And finally, with regards to digital connectivity, it's possible that building regulations have overtaken the local plan update with what was announced on the 26th of December last year, which may have put in law what we were proposing to put into policy. So that may require us to reconsider that. So next steps, obviously we will continue to analysing the representations. That was, that's a snapshot. It's not, not all of them. And we'll consider to, consider the case for any amendments to either the policies or the evidence base. And a full review of the consultation responses and potential amendments will obviously be a, a formal item for DPP in due course. Thank you.
Thank you. I've just got a question myself coming out of that presentation, Adam. When the full report comes back to this committee, will we see the young people's responses?
Absolutely, yes, yes. It's, that was a bespoke questionnaire that we created specifically for young people. So it asks slightly different questions, but all very relevant questions and we can break all those down for, for members, absolutely.
Thank you. And, and the second question is, will, is, has this plan been subject to young people's views? The review.
The, we'll come on to obviously Leeds Local Plan 2040, but yes, we will be developing a bespoke young person's survey for that as well, yes.
That's what I wanted to know. So we can now move to Agenda Item Seven, Leeds Local Plan Review 2020.
Yes. Just to say, I'm just going to bring up the presentation for, for this before Catherine Holloway makes the, the presentation. Just to say that in terms of the overall pack of information that's in front of members, we recognise there's a lot of information here. I think it's important just to clarify that much of it, if not all of it, is a regulatory requirement. And so things like sustainability appraisal scoping reports are by necessity quite long documents because they do cover quite a lot of ground. I appreciate they can be taken together with all the other papers. It can feel like there is a lot of material in front of you. But I think it's, it's all, all there by necessity. But I think in terms of certainly the, the local plan review, I think that's the appendix one to that report. And obviously for local plan two or LLP 2040, the first appendices is what contains the topic papers. And then I think it's the second appendices, which is the scoping report, which is quite a lengthy document. So let me just present the slides.
So meanwhile, while Adam's finding the slides, can I just thank Catherine for such a comprehensive and well put together document? Thank you. It's taken a lot of time and work and I'm sure members will be happy to hear you talk and walk them through those, those pages.
Thank you. So yes, this is the report on the Leeds Local Plan Review. This relates to a second review that we've done and undertaken. It's a summary table in the appendix one attached to the main report and it's a summary of 228 policies that have been reviewed. Our first review was undertaken back in 2020 and sits alongside the local development scheme on the Leeds City Council planning webpages. So reviewing our policies, it is a legal obligation with the requirement to do so every five years. The review is a technical process and it ensures that the Leeds Local Plan is kept up to date and relevant. This second review focuses in on the Air Valley Area Action Plan as five years have passed since its adoption and therefore the review is required. The review is also an opportunity to refresh the 2020 review of the policies reviewed at that time to consider the subsequent changes made to national planning policy back in 2021. The use of the word review in this context is to consider policies and to consider whether they need to be updated. It is not the process of update. The review helps influence what needs to be considered for a planner update. And we've already started that process through the local plan update one, your neighbourhood, your city, your planet. This review is also a timely exercise which sits alongside considerations of scoping out the Leeds Local Plan 2040 work, which DPP have also discussed previously. So the aim of the review is to undertake a robust and objective look at policies against changes in national policy or local circumstances. It allows us to understand which policies remain up to date for the purposes of decision making and understand where circumstances may have changed or whether or not the policy or policies in the plans continue to be effective in addressing the specific local issues that are identified in them. This in turn helps to focus on whether and to what extent an update of those policies is required. So next slide please. It's lost a bit in colour, but I've just injected some colour into this presentation. So there are a couple of typos that I just want to correct firstly in the covering report. In paragraph nine, this should read that there are a total of 149, not 140 policies across the four documents of the Air Valley Area Action Plan, the UDP Safe Policy, the Core Strategy and the Natural Resources and Waste Plan that whilst considered up to date with the MPPF are considered in need of review to ensure that local priorities are as fully reflected as possible. This can be as simple as instances where language used in the policies needs amending to reflect the latest terminology. There's also some corrections that need to be made in the numbers presented in paragraphs 15 to 19 in the main report and appendix one. So paragraph 15, 24 in the first line should read 21. In paragraph 17, 31 on the last line should read 36. In paragraph 18, 126 should read 128 and 24 should read 21. And finally, in paragraph 19, 26 should read 36. I think it just demonstrates the scale of the number of policies that we've got across the Leeds Local Plan in the various different documents that we've got. The review and the summary table also helps us to identify those policies that have been brought into the scope of the local plan update through the drafting of the local plan update one, through the Regulation 19 preferred draft new or amended and/or superseded policies. An additional column has therefore been added to the end of the table in Annex One to help identify these policies. There are three policies in the Air Valley Area Action Plan that because of the proposed Regulation 19 draft policies, they've subsequently been brought into scope of update. These three policies will need reflecting in the schedule of Leeds Local Plan policies to be superseded by Leeds Local Plan Update policies. There are remaining 40 policies, including 21 of the 38 Air Valley Area Action Plan policies and policies within the UDP Safe Policies, the Core Strategy 2014 and the Natural Resources and Waste Plan that are considered do not require updating. Next slide please. So what happens next? I'll just move on. Following delegated sign-off by the Chief Planning Officer, we will publish this review online. I'd also like to reiterate that this is a timely exercise. It sits alongside the proposed scope of the LLP 2040, which members have already discussed and where the upcoming consultation, which Caroline will cover in more detail, helps identify the policy areas which are in potential scope for update. The 40 policies from this review considered still effective and relevant will alongside the Core Strategy Select Review 2019 policies and the Site Allocation Plan 2019 policies will, we will be reviewed in 2024, which is five years after their adoption. However, mindful of the current consultation on MPPF and other changes, local circumstances, there may be necessary to have an early review and that will be undertaken where necessary. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, so we'll throw it open to the floor. Any, any questions from members on that piece of process that's been described? No, I can't see. Oh, councillor Brooks.
Just for clarification, we're not, we're not sort of, we're just looking at the stuff that needs reviewing and updating. We, we're not having the discussion now. That's fine. That's very clear. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we can, we can move on. Is it Caroline coming on next?
Yeah, so as, as members will recall, we held a workshop with Development Plan Panel members October last year and then at DPP in November, we ran through in some detail the proposed topics that we proposed to include in the scope of what we were calling Local Plan Update Two. We ran through that in detail. So my intention today is to provide a bit of a really quick refresh on that before giving an overview of the, the material that we intend to use to support the public, proposed public consultation on the scope of the plan. So then just to remove the next slide. So then in, in terms of the context, as Catherine's just outlined, we undertook a local plan review back in 2020, which we've just refreshed and it identifies that there's a number of policies within our existing local plan which we need to consider updating. And local plan update one, which is your neighbourhood, your city, your planet, is updating those policies most directly related to climate change and that's being brought forward first because of the agency of tackling the climate emergency. And local plan update two, which we're going to be calling the Leeds Local Plan 2040, will look at the other topics and needs in Leeds between now and 2020, 2040. And we've got a series of proposed objectives for the plan and we're referring to those as proposed objectives at this stage because until we confirm what the scope of that plan is going to be and what the evidence is about needs, we can't sort of completely confirm them. But at the moment, I think it's going to be really important that the plan is one that reflects the character, the diverse places within Leeds and it is based on up to date evidence of the needs in these places. It needs to enable the right amount, type and quality of development to take place in the right places. And I think there's also a real potential here for us to use this update of the local plan to streamline the local plans so that it's easier to use and understand. And finally, we're going to need to make sure that it's consistent with both national policy and guidance. Next slide. So I've set out on the slide a sort of quite indicative diagram which shows the overall process and timeline for preparing the plan. And as, as you can see, we're at the sort of tip of that yellow arrow on this slide. So really at the sort of very start, the very earliest stage in the plan making process where we've done some initial research on the sort of scope and issues that this plan will need to address. And we're just starting to look to undertake some public consultation on that proposed scope. So what we think the, the topics might be and the sort of key issues and considerations that we're going to need to take into account as part of that. And what we're proposing is for this local plan is we'll undertake what we call two sort of early stage Regulation 18 consultations on the plan. So once we've agreed the scope, we'll then, and developed our evidence and understanding of some of the issues, we'll do a further Regulation 18 early consultation about what, what we think some of the options are before we come back to writing detailed policies, which then get published for a further round of consultation before being submitted to government and going through the examination process. And we're proposing that this formal consultation on the scope of the local plan update will take place for six weeks between the 10th of February and the 24th of March this year. But I think it probably is worth noting that whilst the six week scoping consultation, which is required by the regulations, it's something that we need to do. It's really just, we're sort of very much viewing that as the start of the conversation about the local plan. And we intend to continue to engage with communities outside this formal consultation period as we sort of build up evidence and understanding of what, what the needs might be and what this might mean for different places. And can sort of discuss what this might mean for places, how people would like to see their neighbourhoods, the district develop in the future. Onto the next slide. So as members may well recall from the previous discussions, there are seven broad topic areas that we're proposing for inclusion in this plan. So the spatial strategy, housing, economic development, the rural centres, minerals and waste, transport and connectivity and other topic areas which are sort of more detailed policies used to help determine planning applications and set sort of standards and criteria. Covering a wide range of really important matters in Leeds, so things like heritage, landscape, rural development, community facilities, contaminated land and hazardous substances and open land and green corridors in urban areas. And there's topic papers appended to the report, which we've, members will probably be familiar with because they're very similar to what we've presented previously. They've just been refined slightly for the consultation. So I wasn't intending to go into any further detail on these today. However, all the topic leads are in the room. So if you do have any questions, we'd be happy to take these at the end. So if we move on to the next slide. So then in terms of the consultation material, there's two key documents which form the sort of basis of the consultation. The first is the scoping consultation document and this compiles individual topic papers which set out the key issues and considerations for each of the topics proposed for inclusion in the scope of this local plan update, along with a sort of general introduction explaining what the plan's all about. And alongside this, we're also publishing for comment the Sustainability Appraisal Scoping Report. And this sets out the proposed scope of the sustainability appraisal that we'll need to use to help ensure that the plan delivers wider sustainability objectives and we'll be using that to assess options as we develop them. And the scoping report at this stage sets out how we propose to do that, along with some key plans, policies and programmes that we'll also need to have regard to, as well as baseline information, which sort of sets the baseline for this plan. And both of these documents are appended to your papers for today. I'll move to the next slide. Alongside this, we're preparing a summary document. And we've done this for previous consultations and found it's a really useful way of sharing what we're doing with a wider audience who might not necessarily want to read the full document or they want to read this first to understand what it's, you know, in a nutshell, what it's all about before they delve into a bit more of the detail. And working with the graphic designers in the Creative Services team at the council to ensure that it's visually engaging and it's going to have a short text summary for each of the, the topics, just summarising what this is about alongside a sort of very visual infographic which highlights some of the key points and data and examples of these are shown on the slide. We're also developing our website to support the consultation. So we'll have a specific page on the website for the Leeds Local Plan 2040 with sub-pages for each of the topic areas. And this will include a sort of general introduction to what's this all about, as well as sub-pages for each of the topics. All of the information from the consultation material and consultation documents and summary will be available on the website. And we're also going to have video, video presentations which explain the proposals, which recognise that different people like to access information in different ways. Onto the next slide. And also on the website, we're going to have our response survey and as you saw from the, the sort of initial findings of the local plan update one consultation, this has proved to be a really popular way of people responding to consultations and it's a tool that we're keen to promote the use of through this consultation as well. So letters and emails will also be accepted if that's how people prefer to get in contact with us. And for each of the topics, we're going to have a variety of questions. So we need to ask the question about should, do you think this topic should be included in the scope of the plan? But we're also using this as an opportunity to get some initial views about some of the key issues and considerations that we're going to need to take into account in developing options. So things like what do people think are important factors that we need to take into account when planning for new development? What's the relative importance? So just getting a bit of a sort of feel beyond just, do you think this should be included in the plan? But what, what do you think about this in, in general terms? And we're designing this survey so that allows people to choose how much detail that they want to get into and how many questions they want to answer. So, which I imagine will be dependent both on how much time people have available and, and their interest in the topic. So enable people to, if they want to, they can just answer one or two quite simple questions. But if they would also like to get into more detail, there'll be a series of further questions that they can opt into answering. And we're hoping that this sort of will be a flexible approach which will cater for different people depending on how, how interested or how much time they've got to get involved and respond to the survey. If we move on to the next slide. Alongside the consultation, we're also going to be launching a call for sites. And this provides an opportunity for anyone to make suggestions about pieces of land that they would like to be considered for inclusion in the plan for a wide range of potential uses. And we've developed an online tool for putting forward site suggestions, which anyone can use to bring a site to our attention. And we've specifically designed this to be as easy to use as possible. And the way it works is that enables people to draw a site, you know, bring up a map, draw a site, you know, identify where that is on the map. And then they're sort of talked, taken step by step for a few key questions about that site and what the people would like to see it used for and also what their, their interest in that land is. Are they a landowner, are they a developer? Are they a local resident, community group and so on? And we're hoping this tool will make it easier for anyone to make such site suggestions to us beyond just the sort of normal developers or landowners. You know, for example, local people may know of a brownfield site in their area that they think could be a really good place for new development. Or they might have a suggestion of somewhere they'd like to see developed specifically for affordable housing use, for example. And this is, this tool will enable people to, to do that. And it is important to highlight however, that the launching of the call for sites doesn't prejudge the outcomes of the scoping consultation in terms of what topics we'll be addressing through this plan. Or also the work in terms of evidencing and understanding what the needs are that the local plan will need to address. And just because a site is submitted to us doesn't mean that we agree that that site will be needed or indeed that it is suitable for development. However, if a need for additional land is identified, sites identified through the call for sites will However, if a need for additional land is identified, sites identified through the call for sites will provide a pool of options that we'll need to thoroughly assess before we can make any decisions about might be the best options to meet needs. Move next slide. And finally, just in terms of the overall consultation strategy, which we're preparing in line with the requirements of the statement of community involvement. I think the overall aim is to really raise awareness and start conversations about how we might plan for development in Leeds up to twenty forty at this sort of very early stage in the plan making process. And reflecting this, we're proposing to hold a number of face to face events at high footfall venues such as shopping centres to sort of have early conversations with a whole range of people, not just those who've been involved in planning before. And about what what they think about what we're proposing and what we need to think about. I'll also be engaging with neighbourhood planning groups across the district and doing more targeted consultation activity with specific groups, including young people. So using the bespoke survey that we've used for local plan update one, visiting schools and colleges, et cetera. We're going to have press releases which we'll be timed to coincide with the start of the consultation. And there'll also be a social media advertising campaign which focuses on the topics that form the part of the proposed scope of the plan. And as I mentioned earlier, the six week statutory consultation period really is just the start of the conversation about this local plan. And we'll continue to engage with communities outside this formal consultation period to help inform our understanding of the issues, what the options might be before we take further consultation on the options for the plan later in the year. So move on to the last slide. So finally, just just to sort of as as a reminder, really, what we're asking or seeking today is for development plan panel to endorse and recommend to executive board the proposed scope of the local plan twenty twenty forty and that we commence consultation on this and the essay. And also note that we'll be launching the call for sites alongside this. And if you've got any questions or comments myself and the team would be happy to take them.
Thank you very much.
I think I'm sorry, I'll just repeat it for the recording. And we have had quite a lot of discussion on the panel in within the topic areas identified for consultation here. So we've talked a lot about the principles of those and and the the particular nuances of the policy. As I understand today's meeting, it's about us looking at the quality and nature of the materials that are going before the public and making a decision on how appropriate we feel those are and how accessible we feel those are. Have I got that right, Martin and?
Chair, just members perfectly happy to receive comments on the material in the topic papers and for any further explanation on that. Obviously, the the questions that that Caroline illustrated are in front of you. But they are derived from those topic areas. So so all the the sort of the consultation material that that's aiming to be simpler and and more readily accessible is all derived from the wording in the back of here, but you you don't have that to comment on today because we're still working on that up until consultation.
Yeah, I was just clarifying what we needed to agree on first of all, and then I'm happy to take questions or comments on any issue at all within the pack. councillor Brooks.
Thanks, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And so just just a few things floated to my to my brain. In terms of accessibility, are any hard copies going to be available for people without internet access? And will there be like phone numbers for people who for whatever reason can't write in to give their views? Will in in terms of the consultation itself and the results of the consultation, this, so I know in my ward, housing need is like a really high priority and a lot of people really, really are upset about it. Will those comments feed into the way that need is measured? And then just just on on the spatial strategy, will will that include new green space provision or will it not? Is it just about where things go?
Thank you, councillor Brooks. Yes, to confirm that we will have hard copies of the material on deposit at Marion House, but anybody who requires that will also be able to provide any of the drop in events and we'll have phone numbers as well. So if anyone rings us up and and needs additional material to that, then we can arrange for it to be posted out. All we would say is that to make sure that that's for people who are in genuine need of that, rather than people who just say prefer things in paper rather than online. We found when we did the consultation for local plan update one, that quite a lot of people wanted the summaries and we didn't have enough copies to give out. This time we're going to rectify that by having enough so that people can take away copies. So hopefully that will be helpful. In terms of the housing need responses, alongside that, we're also doing the strategic housing market assessment. And that will include a very large household survey that will be sent out across all of Leeds. So in terms of the hard evidence base elements of the consultation and evidence base for the plan, that will be the primary driver for working out housing need in Leeds. But obviously, any responses that people have will be given full consideration as well. And it will be depending, I guess, in what numbers we receive comments for for local areas and to how much degree that can be given in terms of evidential weight compared to, say, the the household survey. And the household survey, I think, gets sent out to something like something like twenty five thousand households across Leeds. So it's a very large survey, which we're very confident is representative of needs across Leeds. In terms of green space, it's not within the scope of the plan as currently proposed in the sense that new green space would be included. But obviously, people who disagree with that were well within their rights to respond as part of the consultation to say that it should be. And obviously, as part of new development, if, you know, the evidence shows that we do need it, it's fully expected that all new sites where it's relevant would include provision of green space and that could be detailed within the site requirements. If you remember from the site allocations plan, we would have sort of a bit of information about green space and that would be included as part of new allocations.
Would you like to come back, councillor Brooks?
Yes, please. Thank you. Are we are we going to be looking at any of the census data? Because obviously it was only done, you know, last year. And also, will we be taking into account housing waiting list and the the data that's coming forward from Leeds housing options as well?
No, I think Martin's going to respond to that. So councillor Brooks.
Thanks, councillor Brooks. So the Schmah Commission was made just before Christmas and ARC four consultants who've done a lot of schmas across the country have been commissioned to do that work and they're going to work with Edge Analytics who are based in Leeds. And we're going to look at the population and the relationship between population growth and household growth. As part of that, we're really keen that they use the updated census, but that's coming out in bits. So the commission for the Schmah will extend into the summer. And we hope that by June, when the 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 sort of the final bits of the the census information come out, they'll be able to, well, they will feed that in. The other thing just to note on the Schmah is that as it as it's currently sat around getting all that wider evidence together and amassing that is involving housing colleagues across the council, adult and social care colleagues across the council and 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 wider colleagues specifically to pull in specific needs for specialist housing. And also to take a very bottom up view of of housing need. So to really look at what what evidence and information can we amass that really gives a strong understanding of what a particular area needs, which I think then helps with your question about, well, how can local people engage with what they 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 feel their needs are? Hopefully, that evidential basis will then sort of correspond to to the feeling that there just isn't enough affordable or specialist or whatever housing being built. That will then enable us to have a really good conversation and engage with the local people at the next stage of the consultation further on this year, so that when we're talking about options for development, we've got the whole picture to bring to local people.
Okay, can I move on? Just very quickly, sorry. The will we will we also be engaging with charities such as Leeds Women's Aid and Advenant? So the so the, I mean, there's a load more that are very specialist. Will we will we be engaging with those organisations to ensure that a broader scope of voices is is included in the in this consultation, especially around the housing issues?
I think it's a really good point, councillor. And I think what we would like is just to receive the names of anybody that you think we need to be directly approaching and consulting with. So that's a call to not 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 just for housing, but for anything that that is relevant to this. Because we don't, we don't necessarily have all these names on our lists and our consultation lists. And if necessary, when we've got more information and evidence about the Schmah, we can certainly have discreet bespoke wider stakeholder group meetings that 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 incorporate these groups.
Thank you. I'm I'm happy to lead on that if you need me to. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a brilliant idea, councillor Brooks. I think that will really improve accessibility and give a very different perspective. It's a brilliant idea and focus groups would be brilliant. If you could lead on those, that would be really, really helpful. councillor Anderson.
I've got a number of things. We can start off on page sixty. The paragraph forty. When it comes to exec board, could you expand upon an initial list of where you're going to be going to? And would you be willing to open it up for elected members to come to you with a suggestion as to where you might be able to go to? For example, in my own ward last time, Janet Howery spent a lot of time getting cold at the entrance to Asda when we did this first time round. So, fine, go back to Asda there again. But we didn't go into other parts of the ward. So it's how we would address that type of thing, as just to give you an example. But there's nothing wrong with what you've got here. All I'm asking you is to expand upon it so that people can see where you're trying to go. That's on that one now. And the other thing is, when you're talking about consulting, are you going to be consulting directly with any parish or town council, any neighbourhood plan group or any neighbourhood forum? Are you going to make yourself available? Because at the end of the day, the neighbourhood plan groups aren't meant to be the ones who are going to come forward with proposals to meet the targets. You know, so it's important we get them on side from the very, very beginning. So that's that's that one. Next one is on page seventy two. And settlement hierarchy. At the last time this was done, it was very difficult to explain to people what is a settlement and how you work out the hierarchy. It caused great problems in my area because it was decided by one person that a site was suburban. And yet a site that was even closer to the urban fringe was deemed not urban. And as a result of that, it was classed differently when you were assessing the site. So we need to explain to people what is a settlement? What is a main urban area? What is a local settlement? And what size does things have to be? Because you then get arguments that local communities are actually quite small and you're including some local communities in an area and it's, how do you deal with that particular one? Then on page seventy eight, and it says under new LP LP twenty, overall housing requirement, the current LHN figure suggests an increase of around nine hundred units. Have you got the effort? Have you got the information that backs that up? And can you make it available to the development plans panel so that we can see what logic and application has been? That's not to say that it's wrong, by the way. I'm only asking that we can see how it was calculated in any shape or form. Now, the other thing as well is, when it comes to the housing needs assessment, how far down are you actually going? So are you saying to pick, you know, is wood house going to be one specific area or is it going to come to the next level up, the ward level? How far down are you actually going to break down the needs? So that, because in different parts of different wards, there are different needs depending on the circumstances within them. And it's okay saying, with great respect, in your ward, that's the need. But there are different parts of different needs within that. And it's how are we going to go down to that level or not? That's it. Sorry for taking up too much time, but.
Thank you. You look as if you're poised to take this one, Martin.
I'll I'll take a couple, councillor, and then I'll pass over to Adam or Caroline for the for the consultation questions, if that's okay. So so just on the local housing need question, councillor Anderson. So so that figure derives from the government standard methodology. So we'll we'll make sure that we we clarify how that's been arrived. That's not saying that the council will accept the government's standard housing methodology. It's simply reflecting what what that is if 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 we did it. And clearly, the government, through its recent planning reforms, have suggested that if local authorities have got another way of doing things, they could. But 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 that's where that that's where that number comes from. In terms of the technicalities around how we assess the potential of settlements and how we look to breaking down overall housing need, I think that's very much for debate and discussion. And I think that will be through this group, either through a workshop session or a formal session. Once we've got feedback from 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 this consultation and once we're progressed with the strategic housing market assessment, where we can actually bring some of the initial findings to bear. But that I think that's down the line.
Okay, can I then hand over to Adam for the other parts of the question?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Anderson. Yes, in terms of say, parish councils and neighbourhood planning groups, yeah, as I think Caroline said in the presentation, we're very keen to speak to all those kind of groups. The the issue will come. Let's take neighbourhood planning groups as an example. We know they've got some timetabled meetings. Some of those happening within the consultation period, which is great. Some of them will go beyond. We will continue to have those meetings, obviously, where it sits outside the consultation period, but it may mean that some of those conversations don't necessarily happen during the formal consultation. But I think as Caroline explained in the in the presentation, this is the start of those conversations. We're not wanting to artificially fetter that or or say that shouldn't happen. So, yeah, we will be in formal contact with every one of those groups. And we will look to attend as many meetings as we can of neighbourhood planning groups in particular to to discuss those issues. In terms of the the consultation activities, what we're keen to do is to attend the kinds of places that attract as much footfall as possible, but aren't necessarily particularly location specific. So places like Leeds Market, White Rose, Trinity, Marion Centre kind of places that have got very heavy footfall, but also attract people from all all over the city. I think at this stage, neighbourhood planning groups notwithstanding, I think going to say bespoke settlements, you would you use settlements? Before we've got anything particularly specific to say about settlements, I think would perhaps perhaps be a little bit too soon. And I I think our thoughts are that for the next round of consultation that that Caroline mentioned in terms of the regulation eighteen, then we can start to have a bit more bespoke conversations, not just thematically, but also geographically and say, okay, we've had a bit more information about this now. Let's talk about your place. So that's 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 our approach for this round of consultation and for the next one. Completely understand issues of wording like settlement hierarchy. They are, they're they're planning jargon, aren't they? Let's be honest about it. But it is how we best convey some of these ideas. I think what we're keen to do is really just talk about, you know, places, neighbourhoods. That means different things to different people. And as Martin said, what that geography will look like in the plan is very much up for discussion. And we have not made any any ideas about that at this stage. But obviously, when we go to these events, I'm sure we will have to spend a bit of time explaining what what these terms mean. And and that's part of the reason why we're wanting to speak to as many people as possible at these kind of events who aren't used to planning speak like that. And we can start to make this real, get some maps out and kind of show to people, okay, this is what this is what it looks at the moment. What do you think about it in the future?
The thirty five percent The thirty-five percent uplift, that's meant to be for major urban areas like Leeds as a city. But unfortunately, sometimes people don't understand Manchester, fine, I can see it applying to Manchester. But a lot of other areas, Birmingham and Leeds being one, they've got quite a large rural area or at least a suburban area. Will the thirty, will the thirty-five percent be applying to the whole of the city? Or are we going to be able to refine it down to the more localised levels? So that's that one. And the other one is during when you were consulting on local plan two, whatever it was, you had a number of online meetings. That might be one way of getting to parish and town council neighbourhood plan groups is if you had a number of those. Because personally, I thought they were great, right? Personally, I thought they were great. And I know you might say we didn't get that many people. Maybe we need to start advertising them out a bit better and letting people know that this is going to be a chance for them to do it and understands what the process is and give them the importance of it. But that's, that's two things I just wanted to, one clarity and one is a suggestion.
Thank you councillor Anderson. Adam?
We'll certainly say that, that final suggestion on board. And I think certainly as a way of getting lots of, say, neighbourhood planning groups or parish council groups in the same place at the same time, it might be helpful to have an online meeting. So we'll certainly take that away as a suggestion. Thank you.
Did you want to come in, Martin?
Yeah, thanks. Just, just on the thirty-five percent uplift. So the thirty-five percent uplift is enshrined in, 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 in national guidance to the top, top twenty cities in the UK. What the council will have to do is it will have to look at its housing needs. It will have to look at the appropriateness of adding a thirty-five percent urban uplift on the basis of available brownfield land or the economic role that, that the city plays within the, the city region, for example. And then look at the, the potential to deliver that in a sustainable manner. So the, 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 a final decision, if you like, on, on a thirty-five percent uplift can only really be made once we've got all the pieces of the jigsaw and we can look at that. But what we will do and throughout this process is we will look at a variety of options. So that when we're presenting the material to people and to members, it'll be very much, well, we could do this or we could do that or we could do the other. And we'll assess the benefits and disbenefits of each. So I'm sure the thirty-five percent uplift will be on or off, on, 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 on some of those options.
Two, two simple observations on that exchange from me. The in-person events, could we invite individual relevant elected members? I know you send a list round and you write to people collectively. But it's easy to lose in the hundred and seventy-five emails per hour that we all receive. So if you could do an individual address to each relevant ward councillor for those, it would be really helpful. And the second observation was about plain language. I know you've gone a long way down the road now with the materials and, and you do work in a very specialist area. It took me eighteen months before I could work out what a plans panel report was actually trying to tell me. And I think sometimes the language can put people off. So the plainer and the simpler and the more straightforward that those presentations can be, I, I think you'd get more engagement. Even with, you know, through the adverts as well. If people see that they're coming to a, a planning consultation, they might think, well, that's really not my, I don't know anything about that, so I won't go. But if they understood immediately the personal direct implications they were expected to have, then I think it might draw more interest. Just my view. Councillor McKenna's next, please.
Oh, thank you Chair. And thank you for the report Caroline. Lots and lots of figures. Enjoyed scrolling through it. Of course, we will develop this as we go on in the coming months and I dare say probably years. But can I ask you to look at page two forty-eight, please? And it's table eighty-one, fatal and serious injury, injuries, casualties in Leeds by road users twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. And looking down this, we can clearly see that the safest modes of travel is in goods vehicles, bus occupants, great, taxi occupants and horse rider. But if you look at the fatalities in the end column, there was ninety-three fatalities in Leeds, on Leeds roads during that time. And I have to say the shocking figure of forty of them were pedestrians, almost half of the ninety-three. Now, I'm thinking ahead because this is long-term planning. I'm thinking by the time this plan is enacted, or maybe even the next five years, they are easing out or so the government has planned, but they've time to change their mind, haven't they Barry? That petrol vehicles will be eased out before this. And I'm thinking that there's going to be an awful lot of electric cars on the road and indeed driverless cars on the road. And it seems to me that the ones who's going to be most in jeopardy are pedestrians. And I just wonder, and I, I won't address it to Caroline at this stage, but it's something to think and come back to us. Are we happy that the plan addresses this fact? Because I don't think we can, we can accept that the, the most unsafe way to travel is somebody walking to the shops or young children walking to their schools. And I think we really should take this very, very serious. And I know from the nods I'm getting around the table, particularly at the top, that we will do. So I look forward to coming back with a much firmer policy on this one. And I'm sure it's, it would be supported by all.
Thanks for that comment councillor McKenna. Would anyone like to address it, add to it, or are you just happy to note it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy just to make a general point, Chair. That's okay.
Is it on the same issue councillor Hayden? Because I'm, I, okay councillor Campbell, would you mind if I took councillor Hayden first in that case?
Sorry Martin, I'm interrupting, but to answer, it's an answer. So we took to exec board in October. And our vision zero twenty forty, which fits in absolutely exactly with this date, that no, no person will be killed or seriously injured on Leeds roads by twenty forty. So we have that. And I'm imagining that this plan will sit alongside and help that vision zero strategy. And it's a West Yorkshire wide one, but obviously we have adopted the Leeds one. And I sit on the board, as does Gary Bartlett, and it's chaired by Alison Low, who councillor McKenna knows extremely well. Yeah, so hopefully this will complement vision zero twenty forty. And it will help us achieve that, that goal. So I just wanted to put that in.
Thanks for that. That's really helpful. Councillor Campbell?
Thanks. I'm just smiling about that comment, considering all the grief I get every time we try and introduce some pedestrian safety schemes. You, you would not believe what, take the grief, I've had bucket loads of it recently. Sorry about that. That's inside. Can I add a couple of points? One that I should have asked the first, in, in response to the first item. So Catherine, you haven't got, quite got away with this yet then. We, we, you've talked about reviewing the policies and you've looked at policies and said, yeah, we need to review those. No, we don't need to bother with those, et cetera. If during the consultation, somebody comes along and says, actually, I think you should be reviewing that policy for this and this reason. Do we have a facility to do that, provided it's a reasonable request? And then I've got a couple of other.
The simple answer is yes. You know, our review is, okay.
Okay. Couple of general points in no particular order. I get worried when you say to me, we'll keep a hard copy in Marion House. Because Barry and I represent almost the end of the world as far as Leeds is concerned. The wild frontier of North Yorkshire. And to get people to come into Marion House is almost impossible. But we do have a library. And I think actually we should keep a copy in each of the libraries. It just seems sensible.
I totally agree with that. The, the community hubs in particular, but if you, libraries in general.
You've got in that, in the.
I absolutely think that's a brilliant idea.
You, you touched on the topic of, you know, consultation around housing type, et cetera. Members consistently have issues with our current policy in relation to housing type and the fact that we never meet it. And so I'm just wondering, either are we confident that the new policy will be robust enough for us to defend? Or are we actually, I suppose, are we going to put a health warning on the consultation? Which is, this is aspirational, not actual. A similar thing in relation to sustainability. We, we often sit, particularly in city plans. And talk about sustainability and the district valuer comes along and expresses a view about how they assess sustainability. And so I think we would, we as plans panel members would be happy if we felt that any discussion to create a policy on sustainability is robust enough for us to defend against what is the national set of guidelines. The, how do we, I, I, I'm not quite clear how we're going to try and get a better response from young people. And I know we said we got forty-five responses, direct responses from them. And that rather surprised me because it must mean that our local high school never got to hear about the, the previous consultation. Because they've got quite an active group, which is probably twenty or thirty young people who would have responded. And so I'd, I'd, I'd be interested to know how we might expand getting into that younger demographic group. They may well say something we don't like, but then we are. And just finally on the neighbourhood plans meeting, if you want to come out to Artley, I, as Chair of the neighbourhood plans panel, I'll make sure we have a meeting with you.
Thank you. Could I just add to your comments about the children's consultation before I ask officers to respond to your points? I, I agree with you. That, that's why I raised the issues that I raised earlier on about will we see the, the specially designed material that young people were given? And can we understand the age group that responded better and, and how they were approached and so on? I think it was at a, a meeting of the inner west community committee that there were some young people in attendance when we happened to be talking about this issue. And there are all sorts of things that I don't think we understand. And certainly planning colleagues aren't young people specialists. So you've outsourced that bit of work, have you, have you not, to children's services? But I think there's a lot of joining up to do frankly. I'm not sure just a straight questionnaire, however well designed, is necessarily going to work. I also think that in person with young people works very well if they happen to be in a particular place at a particular time. So I, I think there's, there is scope for doing a lot more work around how to approach children and young people on a dry sounding subject and make it really engaging. I'm not certain that the last round of consultation did that well enough. So I think there's room for development and I totally accept that you are not children and young people's offices. So we need to find a way of working across the boundaries, in my view. Sorry to interrupt the flow of thought there, but I was, I felt I had to say that. Martin, or?
Yeah, well, obviously take those ideas away in terms of young people. I, I think it, I think it's important to recognise that the, this sort of attempt that we've made so far in terms of breaking this down is not, is not usual. I think, you know, most, a lot of planning consultations around the country do still stick with a fairly kind of dry regulatory format. And we are trying, you know, as we've shown, you know, councillor Anderson mentioned webinars and things like that, trying to broaden our kind of suite of, of tools. Some of those will work, some of them might not, but we will always keep them under kind of review. And I think whilst, yeah, we might say forty-five is not as high as, as, as we would like, but it does, it enables us to set a benchmark, I think. We can say, well, have we improved on that year on year? What we are certainly hoping to do is go directly to schools this time round, which I think will hopefully get kind of more, more engagement on, on that basis. But we're also obviously very open to, it's similar to the way that councillor Brooks raised. If any contacts that we can help use to get, to get further buy-in through young people and, and schools, we will use. But as you say, Chair, at the moment, a lot of our work goes through support from children and families, kind of colleagues. Just to say, in terms of the hard copies issue, the regulations and our own SCI say that we are required to put a, a copy of the material at Marion House. We're not required to put any material anywhere else. I think, put it, given you, you'll know obviously from the material that's in front of you, printing out the whole material, we've got hundreds and hundreds of pages, putting it on every library on one stop. To my mind, is, will be quite a lot of paper that will never be read. So as a compromise, I wonder if it'd be better if we put a copy of the summaries at each library in one stop. And that gives people physically something they can read. It's written in a way that's designed to be approachable, easy to read. But also contains, all those libraries obviously have web facilities so that people can read that material online if they need to. But I would question having the whole material at every single library in one stop. Because our history of that would suggest that most of that will never be read. So that I would, that would be my suggestion for, for that. In terms of the question about how strongly do we feel a future policy can be about things like housing typologies and, and types and mix and things like that? Obviously, we're at a really early stage, but what we're really hopeful is that previously, a lot of our evidence and how it was expressed in policy wasn't particularly locally specific. We would have housing mix as reflected across the whole of the district. Whereas if we can build up data, as, as Martin's already described, that's quite locally levelled, using the census, using lower super output areas, we can start to build up a picture that's a lot more locally specific and start to set out needs that are locally specific. That, I think, makes for a more robust policy. But we, obviously, there's an awful lot of work that needs to be done on that to see whether that, how possible that is and what that looks like.
If I could just comment on the, the paper in the libraries and one stops, I, I take your point. It's a lot of paper. In our community hub in Bramley, we have some very, very approachable, helpful, obliging staff who help people with all sorts of research and finding all sorts of documents and, and appear very pleased to do so. They're very accommodating. Would it be possible, do you think, to train them so that if somebody asks for the materials, they can look at the summary form of the materials? And the staff of the hubs can sort of access the rest of it for them on screen or help them to do it? Or understand a bit about it so they can explain? Because they do that for lots of other things.
Yeah, we could certainly put a briefing together for library staff so that they understood our material, which bits did what? And where to go for individual bits. That's, that's absolutely not a problem.
Martin?
Thanks Chair. Ju- ju- just, just to say, and just, just, just to comfort yourself and members of the panel. We, we have the statement of community involvement, which, which sets out what our consistent minimum approach to consultation is. We, we have to do that and we're obliged to do that in order to meet legal tests of plan making. But depending on what stage we're at, at a plan, and depending on what issues we're discussing, that will lead to different approaches to consultation. So I think as Adam has said, when we get to the stage of potentially drawing lines around sites and saying, that's where we think we need to deliver employment growth, that's where we think we need to deliver housing growth. And here is the evidence and support of that. I think that necessarily will need a different approach to engaging local communities and being in local communities and providing material to local communities than the stage we're at at the moment, which is very much sort of warming up to the sorts of issues that we're going to discuss. And in, in very broad sort of non-specific terms. So, so, so we really will take account of sort of members' concerns and, and suggestions and issues around talking to local people because, and, and not just local people in general, but, but younger local people. Because it's often the younger local people who, who are going to need the house built in ten years' time that, that, that we don't often hear from. So just, just, just to comfort members that we, we will take that approach and we'll, we'll consider that at each stage.
Thank you. Did you want to come back councillor Campbell?
Look, a couple of general points. Okay, I, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the, the document itself may just be too bulky. But I, I would say, when you, you, you said to me, or said to us, we can produce a briefing document for the one-stop shop or the library. I, I worry at that point as to who picks it up. And it would seem to me that it. And it would seem to me that it might be useful uh as we don't seem to like to have meetings anymore, but actually to have a Zoom meeting with the relevant staff within those one stop shops libraries and say and talk them through it. Just send in a document, uh you know, as an email, they're just not going to do it. I'm sorry, they're just not. Uh because I know what councillors are like, so, you know, uh just one other thing. I'm interested in the comment about effectively localising policies, which I think is something that we've we've said for a number of years now with it. You know, we we have a Leeds wide policy, which we can't. Is it, would it be possible? Let let's use, let's use three bedroom houses, for example. And if we 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 set up a policy in, I was going to say in Kayleigh's ward, but she's gone. Um uh in her in her ward, for example, that we we needed ten percent affordable housing on a on new developments. Could we include within the policy that you needed to have? It was the uh it fell to the developer if they didn't want to produce ten percent to identify within the rest of the area where the ten percent plus was being provided. So we got the ten percent across the entirety. If you follow what I'm saying there.
Martin?
I I I think that's that's a fair point, councillor Campbell. And I think we can, we can certainly look at that as we go, we go down the line. But what I would say is i if we look at the direction of travel of national guidance, which is 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 very much to um have a lot more engagement at the early plan making stage rather than the 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 development management stage and actually front load a lot of what the local authority wants to see in the plan rather than rely on the developer bringing it. And couple that with the national model design code and the need for um consideration of of design coding at at specific sites. What you you you're getting towards um within a development plan document like this is a lot more of an understanding about how many homes, but not just how many homes, what type, how many, how many, how many dwellings, um what 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 green space, um what access? So almost pushing down to that sort of almost like outline master plan stage uh of development through things like the the design coding, which would enable you um and enable the council to sort of build those the the those ambitions in at a very early stage.
Sorry, can I just quickly? I understand what you're saying, uh and I think many of us thought that's where we were in effect by the policies we produced. But it's it's transpired that we're not there. And so I think from my point of view, and probably from a lot of other members' point of view, we'd like that certainty. We we don't want that situation where developers turn up with a planning application and say, yeah, I know policy is this, but we can't do it because of X, Y and Z. Uh now, if you say to me that you think we can produce policies that are rock solid, um then I'm happy, uh because at least it'll cut down a heck of a lot of discussion in plans panel meetings.
It's nodding. Uh councillor Hayden?
Thank you, Chair. Um a couple of things. First, going back to the children, um correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but they were the responses, and it would be really interesting to see the breakdown, were from groups of children that we wouldn't normally hear from. So such as our um care leavers and um children that looked after and things like that. So um I'm really pleased that those normally hard to reach groups because you will get children in all our schools who are in on the school council and are very used to filling in these kinds of surveys. But to to hear the voice in something like this of of children who and young people are not normally um engaged is um is really good. And like you say, it's a benchmark. Um on the library um issue, I disagree, councillor Campbell. Um our library staff are fantastic. They will pick up a briefing document and they will know exactly what to do. And they, I don't think they really need a Zoom call to 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 know that because they can navigate people through the D W P. So if you can do that, then you can uh you can navigate a planning document. So um yeah, and I I think a summary, a paper summary, because we've got to think about the carbon costs as well. Well, my knock Holton is absolutely brilliant, so I'm doing cross gates as well. So we maybe, maybe you need a conversation with the exec member for libraries about your particular one. Um so um a a across the city, I think, they provide a really good service and they they would if they had um if they had that. So but we also have to think about the carbon cost of a huge document going into every library.
Councillor Campbell, you're welcome to come back in, but could you put your mic on, please?
I'm I'm quite happy with the principle of, I was going to say the cut down version. It's 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 quite a big cut down version because I understand the principle of too much documentation. I just think it's important. Um yeah, you you're right. I I I've got two libraries in my ward. Um one of those is better than the other, uh if you see what I mean. Um and I think it's important that the people involved know what they're doing. And and I I do think this might be a case where a a team's meeting is a better way of explaining it, talking to people through than a briefing. Doing both, I don't mind.
Okay, do you want to come back, councillor Hayden? Okay, any further questions and comments? From anybody at all, including officers? Any points of clarification you would like to make? No?
I think I think maybe just one point, Chair.
Yeah, you might want to summarise the recommendation as well.
Yeah, um so ju- just to just to say to um all members, really, um we we do have to sort of use the architecture and infrastructure that the council provides us with in terms of consultation. Um and I think if the onus is on planning um when it comes out for its consultation to almost remedy um what are perceived as some of the inefficiencies uh i i in that consultation, even though I'm I'm not sure there are. Then it just adds to the burden that we're already facing um in terms of preparing the plan. Because these things do take a lot of resource and a lot of time to 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 prepare. So I think we do have to use what we've got within the the current arrangements and the current infrastructure. And I think that's what our recently updated statement of community involvement sets out. So I think we will, we do need to think quite carefully about if we do decide to go beyond that. Um because that eats into uh resources and 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 time constraints. But but I certainly take the points that members have made around, you know, the importance of that engagement, which I think is why I said that we need to be flexible um about how we do that, depending on what the 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 topic and the stages that we're at.
Okay, so we'll now come to the, oh, councillor Brooks wants.
Thank thanks, Chair. Sorry, um I I fully recognise that that sometimes the the planning department are under a lot of strain, which is, which is why rather than coming at you with more work, that's why I offered to take it on myself. Um so I think I think probably like us as as councillors should probably take on a little bit more of that. Um and and yeah, community facing stuff. I'm I'm more than happy to lead on engaging with the the third sector and other organisations. Um but obviously, I'm going to need some resource from the planning department to accompany. Now, I need to have a bit of a think as to how it's how best to do it, but like, I'll be in touch with you to just sort that out and to to get an idea of your capacity for it.
Really good creative stuff. Thank you. Uh would you like to just remind people what they are considering now?
I will do, Chair. Thank you. Uh and if I may, um with your indulgence, I can I skip back to the recommendations on agenda item seven, just so that we're really, we're really, we're really clear. So so just starting with the um item seven, which was the local plan review, which was the assessment, the technical assessment of policies. Um development plan panel have commented on the report. Um and and please note that the chief planning officer will now approve that via his delegated powers. Um and that review will be published online with the amendments that Catherine outlined, because there was a few typos to be taken into account. Um so if if members are happy with those recommendations on item seven, on item eight, it's about endorsing the material that you've got in front of you today. Uh and recommending that executive board carry uh endorses the um consultation um on the the update material um for six weeks. Um along with the sustainability appraisal scoping report and the call for sites.
Do we have to vote on each separately?
Um I I I would suggest.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
So the first set of recommendations on page eleven. All of those in favour, please? Unanimous, thank you. And the second set of recommendations on page fifty one, extending to page fifty two, all of those in favour? Yes.
So 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 what we'll do, councillor Anderson, is, um as I say, all all of the additional material, the summaries, the questions will be derived from and sourced from what's in front of you today. But what we will do is we'll make sure that we sign that off with um the chief planning officer. Um and we'll do that in consultation with councillor Hayden, the executive member.
Okay.
The comment made by the Chair about plain English, because sometimes we can lose people on page one because we make it sound more complicated than it actually is.
Okay, so bearing that in mind, all of those in favour of the recommendations starting on page fifty one? And that again is unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Uh I, any other business from anyone? You have some?
I don't, but just remind members that we've got the workshop session.
We, yes. Would you like to just remind them of the date?
Because I'm sure. Um so um yeah, just to remind members, um uh when the Chair closes the meeting, that we do have a workshop session immediately after this um to discuss the um national planning policy framework.
Councillor Brooks?
That wasn't added to the calendar.
Um I think an email went round, Martin.
Do you want to close this?
I will officially close this meeting now and then we will not be a public meeting anymore and we can discuss the point you've just raised. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending the first part of the meeting.